And welcome to our second finance meeting of the year. Um, let me pull up our agenda so I stay on track. All right, and Mr. Braden will not be joining us tonight. So you all get to listen to our beautiful voices. All right, I know first on the agenda, um, the law department has received, a good amount of claims that they want us to look over. I think last month, Mr. Gary said that they had received over forty at that point. I am very thankful that they kind of went through all the claims, did the research with the public works department and any other administration involved, and kind of filtered those down for us. So we just need to, we'll go through them, discuss, and we can make a motion to approve or deny the claim. Let's see. So the first one. The first one is from Alan Bridges. The date of the incident was one-ten. Place of incident, eastbound on state route five-sixty-two at Section Avenue Overpass. So they said they were driving eastbound on the state route five-sixty-two when a piece of debris struck their windshield, causing a crack. They believe the offending debris fell from the Section Avenue Overpass. Dash cam footage confirms that an impact happened at this location. You can clearly hear it, but the impact is out of frame. They are seeking seven-hundred-and-eleven and forty-eight cents to seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and forty-eight cents to cover the cost of repairs to the vehicle. Along with the form, they attached a photo of the damage, their insurance information. They did not submit it to insurance since the repair cost is less than the deductible. So I can pass this around. Some information also received from, they spoke to CAT, ODOT, informed Public Works about issues. It was not repaired in time. Law Department says we should pay because Norwood knew of the issue. I'm happy to pass this around if you all want to look at it.
Sure.
Okay. Are you guys okay if I continue on?
Yeah, please go ahead. We can kind of go, I figure, go through them all and then vote at the end or whatever.
Okay.
If that works.
Next one is from Nathaniel Halbert. The, um, claim, date of incident was one-twenty-three or one-twenty-four. Place of incident was Cypress in Montgomery. They heard a siren behind them and pulled over into a ditch. When they observed it wasn't them, the officer was pulling over. They tried to move out of the ditch, and then they were struck. The officer called tow truck to pull them out, and it cost ninety dollars. The law department says the catch base gave away. Public Works was not informed by, before this incident happened, I guess, in the catch basin.
Thank you.
So that's kind of the only information that we have received. So they thought they were getting pulled over, they pulled over. They were not the person being pulled over. So that was.
And it's for?
Yeah, it's ninety dollars for the tow truck cost. Because when they pulled over, the catch basin.
Collapsed.
Collapsed. And so they had damage to that. So they're looking for ninety dollars for the towing service. Next is Tim Weaver. Let's see. So claim was while traveling eastbound on state route five-sixty-two, they hit a pothole in right-hand lane, immediately blowing the tire, rendering them incapacitated. The area looked to have had an entire section repaired previously, and that repair failed. The blown tire required a tow to the nearest dealership for a replacement tire. I'm just looking for a cost. And there are some bills here, so there's one for three-seventy-two sixty-five. I assume Norwood fixed this pothole during phone call.
For this one, he says the officer called the tow truck.
Yes.
For him, or not for him, he just said the officer called. So I don't know like that.
So the officer was helpful.
Yeah, well, I guess you could say maybe the driver didn't have the choice if the officer called without us.
Okay, um, so this one happened on, one-twelve. Here, Public Works said they were not made aware of the pothole until one-four, which Public Works didn't make the necessary repairs. There was a claim filed by Mr. Weaver with ODOT, only to be advised that the potholes located in the city of Norwood. So it was repaired, but the repair.
Failed. Okay.
There's pictures and all that there. Another similar incident, research shows repairs to potholes on five-sixty-two were done before the date of the incident. This is with James Underwood. They're not, the claim on is different. Anyways, so Norwood Lateral, Norwood Exit, near Tri-Half exit. Date of incident was one-twenty-seven. They were driving on Norwood Lateral, and once they approached the Norwood exit, there was a huge pothole on the right-hand side of the lane. They wanted to veer off to the left side, but there were other cars approaching and didn't want to cause an accident. As soon as they hit the pothole, their tire immediately went flat and drove to the nearest tire spot. They would like to be reimbursed for their expenses to fix it. Tires were brand-new. So it looks like total expenses for repair are two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. So starting with the first one, any thoughts?
I, I know that, um, like Jeff, I think you had talked to Clint about that incident.
Yes, this is the windshield overpass.
Yeah.
Clint said there had been work on that underpass or on the underside of the overpass, because there was debris that had been loosened or something like that. Yeah. And from what it sounds like, there's the video camera, whatever, says that it happened or an impact happened right then, under the pass.
Work was done prior to that or not?
There was work done prior to that.
That's something that the city was aware of, basically.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a nasty pothole. Sorry, I'm just looking at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I saw the picture of that case with that pothole.
You know, again, the law department graciously went through all the claims, and these were kind of the top ones that they were like, there is a possible case to the city, helping with the payment, so.
I would, I don't know. I mean, all the costs seem reasonable. There's nothing unreasonable about the numbers that were take, were thrown out, just at first blush. It seems like the windshield one's the most expensive, but if they were doing work on it, they'd already known stuff that was falling from it. It seems like that might be something we should be, you know, liable for. And then with the potholes, like, it, it seems like the city was aware of them, attempted to fix them, but failed to fix them in a way that didn't result in. So it's another thing where the city did know what was going on. It wasn't like a brand-new pothole that had just appeared. Because I think when we've done this, we did this, like, last time we had a bunch of claims, that was kind of the deciding factor was, did the city know about the pothole or not? Prior to it, so. So for me, I, I don't think they're unreasonable claims.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll take a look at this one.
So I'm gonna make a motion for the claim from Alan Bridges, for the city to cover damages to his windshield in the total of.
Seven hundred.
It's in my brain, but I want to get it right before I verbally say it.
If anybody is paying attention at home, I heard Mr. Gary say something in a public forum recently. When we obey the speed limit, our tires are much less likely to be permanently damaged.
That's true.
Which everywhere in Norwood is twenty-five miles an hour. All right, um, so the total of seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. So yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Bridges' claim and have the city cover the cost of his windshield. Can I have a second?
A second?
Thank you. All right. Next one was the tow truck.
Ninety dollars.
Ninety dollars. I again think this is a legitimate claim. The police officer, you know, not that it was on him, but he helped and called the tow truck. Individual is trying to get out of the way, and we had something collapse.
Matter of fact, I, I live here at this corner, and there is a metal plate right now, right over next to that corner where this must have happened.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the claim from Nathaniel Halbert to cover the ninety dollars of the towing fee.
Second motion.
I guess, I guess it should be like vote yes, as all is doing the motion, so.
We can do it all at the end, or we can do it each one?
All right, we can just do it all at the end.
Next claim was the one from Tim Weaver, and that was on the five-sixty-two, where it was a previous issue that was fixed, but the fix, um, did not work.
Yeah.
And that.
Photo is, it's a very egregious.
Yeah, it's a bail. It's not on the, it's not off the road in the other lane. It's in, it's a big old one, and it's clearly not the first time it's been repaired.
And the total costs for. I see two different. Two different payments. Okay, so there it is. So the total cost for their car repair is a four-hundred-and-one dollars and seventy-two cents. I make a motion to approve their claim, and the city pay the four-hundred-and-one and seventy-two cents.
All right, I second. And I did have a question on this one, just because it's probably just that one person's the insured and the other person was driving, so. The person that made the claim is Shawnee Ivory, but the person who actually got it at the Firestone was James Underwood. So maybe like they're partners, then one of them was driving the other cars or something.
Yeah, the name, it's through, James Underwood is the one who paid. So that's who the, yeah.
The payee is.
Yes.
I mean, it might be just a matter of like that person's a friend, a partner, et cetera.
Yeah, and so, yeah, these were brand-new tires.
Right.
They had no other option than to hit it without causing damage to someone else's car. So the total for that fix would be two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty cents, via the research done by the law department, and, um, all of that, I mean, repairs were done before the incident, but obviously, kind of, it seems like the same as the other situation.
They weren't done as well, or, you know, it failed.
Yeah, it failed. Thank you, that was the word I was looking for earlier.
It's cool, I'm losing a lot of words lately.
Any thoughts on this one?
I don't have a reason to say no to that.
The other ones. So comparable to.
Yeah, I'd say it's comparable to the other one, so it seems weird to say one and not the other.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the claim to repay James Underwood in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. So everyone here tonight that can vote, I guess, can I get a yes? Ms. Ranzin?
Yes.
You don't have to say yes, you can say no.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Geerton?
We on all four?
Yes, on all four.
I vote yes on all four.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Thank you all for that. Onto the next. I think it's your floor now, Mr. Miracle.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Want to talk to you this evening about some open purchase orders from 2023. So I'd like to walk you through the process. Initially, these, these purchase orders were issued in 2023, and the auditor of state has informed us that any open purchase orders from 2023, that amount is deducted from that fund in 2024. Yeah, that causes some, some, some issues if those POs are left hanging open. So I had spoken to, excuse me, I'd spoken to the auditor of state and wanted to make sure that, discuss what our remedy would be. So what we're doing, which I've emailed you the initial open order, which was about sixteen pages long, we have it down now to about four. So what, what we're doing, and the process of doing, which I've shared this with you in email as well, we're closing the POs. That's the, the first step that we have to do. Then we have to send this information to Anna Mary Thomas at the auditor of state's office. We're provided with her the spreadsheet that you saw, which is the fund, the balance. And then what we're asking her to do is to approve appropriations for these funds. So once that she has done that, she's going to give that information back to us, and we're going to prepare an ordinance for, for council. And so that will come before you for your consideration. And then, once that happens, we have to, um, send that information to the auditor of Hammond County. And so that's our, um, uh, report of estimated resources. We have to, we have to change that. So that's the complete process, because those purchase orders were, were left open. So, so what we have now is probably seventy-five, eighty percent of those, we've already given to Anna Mary. We plan on having the rest of these completed and done with the next few days. And she'll have that complete list. And then, uh, once we have her approval, then we will initiate the appropriations ordinance that we'll bring forward here, first meeting in March. So a lot of work's gone into this. A little bit of, uh, doing some CSI here, so, but that's, that's fine. And, um, working with Sasha and then with Marcus, they've done an excellent job on this. So, um, again, hope to have this done in the next few days. Then we'll, that process, as I've described to you, will move forward with that as well. Couple of things I'd like to share with you. Obviously, the, the goal is to be out of fiscal emergency this year. Working very hard toward that end. So, um, it's my understanding that, uh, once, um, we're out of fiscal emergency, this, this process will not be, will not be here. So we won't have to, uh, we won't have to go through this again. And, uh, so that's, that's something that we're, um, obviously trying to obtain this year. So hopefully this is the last time you see this type of, uh, effort. And, um, but I want to make sure that, um, we get all the information in front of you, because you will be seeing this here, um, shortly. So having said all that, I know that was a pretty quick summary of what's happened, but it's taken a little bit, uh, to get to where we are right now. So, but I think it's, it's the, it's the right thing for us to do. So, uh, essentially, the funds that were meant for, uh, or the monies that were meant for these funds, um, that, uh, that were deducted are now going to be put back here in very short order.
Mr. Miracle?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna try to summarize, and I, I want you to know, all of my education is liberal arts. So I'm, I'm just trying to do this because I've had a couple of residents ask if I could dump things down. And I was like, I'm gonna do that for myself, too. So we have open purchase orders that were budgeted and everything for the previous year.
Correct.
But because they weren't tied up, they're coming out of this year's monies.
Correct.
And so you're trying to remedy that so that, when it comes before council, we'll take all these purchase orders and make sure that money comes out of last year's. It does not inhibit future spending in twenty-four.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I had that in simple terms.
Well said. Excuse me.
And for the benefit of those that are not looking at this appropriations spreadsheet, a number of these are projects that are basically ongoing or coming up. So, uh, some big ones that are still open are like the Montgomery Road curb ramps, the five-sixty-two replacement poles or some lights, um, five-sixty-one curb ramp construction. So stuff that is going to happen, but just has not happened yet. And that's a pretty typical, you know, any large project like that, things get pushed back. So just for purposes of people knowing kind of what this is about. A lot of the other ones are smaller amounts that are for various different things, like court stenographer, pest control, et cetera. So just if you're wondering what these appropriations are, that's kind of the idea.
Yeah, so it's, uh, some maintenance that we have to do, um, but we'll get through it.
And from what I heard from you, you're working on procedures to make sure that we're not twenty-three purchase orders in the hole in the future.
That is, that is correct. I hope this is the last time we have this discussion. Recording this topic.
Right.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here and all the work that we kind of know about and don't know about. I did want to bring up to see if you guys wanted to make a motion to do a standing meeting this time every month. I don't know if that would help just the communication pathway going, specifically just kind of with the FRP. It's up to you. I'm happy to, if we want to do that or not, I just wanted to bring it up.
I, and my understanding is we were going to do this anyway. So I'm, I'm okay with it if you are. I will, I will say, and I'll mention it in, uh, when I report out. Next month, I will be in Columbus at a conference for local government officials. It's the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Unfortunately, we meet on the twenty-sixth. I've already informed Mrs. Winterbauer that I won't be here that night, but, uh, I'm looking forward to, um, to that conference and some of the classes and interaction that we're gonna have with other local officials out there.
It's my opinion that this is probably the most important thing the city can be doing right now. And so I think it's the least that this committee could do is to just show up and make sure that Mr. Miracle is held on the hot seat. Which, for what it's worth, I, I think I said this last time. I came in guns ablaze and ready to be like, what is going on? And it seems like you are well ahead of the game, so I appreciate that. And, um, yeah, I think our citizens just need to know that we're, we're not ignoring this.
Yeah, and it, just from like a knowledge standpoint, it's nice to have like an update fairly regularly, even if it's more just like we meet and say, yep, things are going okay, things are smooth, here's some stuff that's coming up. I know, obviously, next month, but yeah, it would be great to have a standing meeting in the months coming up. And if we need one next month, I guess we can just make a special date instead, and that's fine with me. And I mean, I'm not doing anything else before the council meetings anyway, the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, so this would be the second meeting, the second standing meeting of the month. We would meet before that.
Yeah, so, um, I would like to make a motion to have a standing finance budget audit and claims meeting the fourth Tuesday of every month at six-thirty PM in council chambers. If I can get a second, and then we can move.
I will second that.
Second. Ms. Ranzin?
Yes, I, uh, yes, I would vote yes.
Mr. Geerton?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you much for that. And I can, if there's something next month you want me to.
Sure.
Talk on, I'm happy to do that. And we can just go from there with that. Any other comments or anything? Come to the floor, Mr. Moore.
Chair recognizes their law director.
You're not the chair.
Just a concerned citizen. So we have an issue with, I don't know if you know, under state law, if someone indigent dies in the city of Norwood, the city is responsible for burying or cremating them. We have an individual that's held, that is currently at the coroner's office, and they want him, hey, can you arrange for this guy to get picked up? And from what I've heard going back and forth, there's a, there's a, I guess a requisition was issued, and it was kicked back because there wasn't enough money, and whatever key it is in the health department. And I don't know if the auditor's office knows what's going on with this, but really, we ought to jump on this and take care of it. So I thought I would bring, since this stuff just started flowing, flowing at me. Well, I got an email a few weeks ago, and I, the health department was copied, so I didn't pay any attention to it, but now they.
The border house.
Now that, well, yeah, the border house. So now I've, I've been dragged in, so now I'm here, because there's a finance meeting. If Dan can't be here, so I'm tossing it out to you guys.
Okay.
If we need the appropriation or whatever it is for the next appropriation that comes up to be put in. If we need the appropriation or whatever it is for the next appropriation that comes up to be put in that, or if maybe it's one of the PO issues, or it's the wrong key, or whatever it is, so.
We'll figure it out, I'll get back to you in the next couple of days.
It's not an exorbitant amount of money, so. And of course, we have a collection of urns at the Health Department, so if anybody has thoughts on what we might do with those.
Are, are they urns with human remains?
Ours with humans, human remains for unclaimed individuals, so.
That.
If anybody has thoughts on what we might do with those.
Actually, I can ask, so Xavier, recently, a couple of years ago, they went through and, uh, got rid of all of the human remains that they had, like they had some samples, like, um, in jars. In the biology department, not, not just floating around, I just want to be sure. It's in the biology department for biology reasons. Yeah. So I can ask them, like, what they did. Um, I, I don't know, I'm sure that this is something that comes up for universities and stuff fairly, uh, recently, so I'll ask.
Thanks.
Make a note today, so.
All right. Anything else? No? All right, we'll, uh, bring this meeting to a close, and thank you all for your time.